The Committee of the Hall is called to order. Materials for the Committee of the Hall are in the shared session, Google Drive, labeled Committee of the Hall, Bill Number 268-37COR. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via email, sessiondrive@guamshu.org. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. Rules of engagement: we will have three rounds for discussion. We will begin with one round of questions for the panel. With each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. If a second round is needed for questions, we will entertain it. Otherwise, we will dismiss the panel and proceed to the amendment and comments to the bill. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who used that member's time on a question used all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used. Questions shall be confined to the substance or nature of Bill 268. Reminder, my colleagues, we're here to discuss Bill 268, not anything else. Personal influence as to the character or motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will be called out of order and may result in removal from the hall. Proper form to the court shall be practiced by all present. Individuals who fail to maintain proper form to the court will be restricted from participating and will be escorted and removed from the room. After you complete the discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsor to close and I will entertain a motion for the recommendations of the Committee of the Hall, followed by the motion to rise from the Committee of the Hall, at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Hall. With that, we will be discussing Bill 268. Right now, on the panel, we only have the Director of the Office of Veterans Affairs, Jose San Augustin. The Office of BBMR and Department of Administration were invited, but due to their pressing meetings, they are attending all day so far today. They're not able to make it. OFB folks are on their way. And with that, I ask Senator Tyree to go ahead and give her opening on her Bill 268, introduced by herself and corresponded by Senator Brown. Senator Tyree.
Sidoos Masi, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon to my colleagues. Mr. Chair, Bill 268-37, where Senator Brown and I introduced, in response to what our veterans have told us they need. The one area where they feel underserved by our government is healthcare services. Guam has a large veterans population. These are men and women who served our island and our nation well and faithfully. Many are now elderly, or disabled, or both. Many have struggled for years to receive the benefits they deserve, but they still struggle today just to preserve their health. What this bill does is enhance the operation of our local Veterans Affairs Office. It provides the capability to hire additional personnel and a transport vehicle so that our veterans can receive assistance in arranging medical appointments, record-keeping, communications with medical and pharmaceutical providers, and transportation to those providers. Just the other day, we saw a news report that the Federal Department of Veterans Affairs will provide transportation service for veterans. Of course, this is welcoming news, but will it solve part of the problem with our veterans that remains to be seen? There are organizations, both government and non-governmental, that support veterans. We have Serving Together in Washington, DC. We have the Disabled American Veterans that have been serving our veterans since the end of World War I. They still provide services today. They continue to do so because clearly, clearly, the need exists. Considering that individuals' states have their own Veterans Affairs Office that provide services beyond what the VA provides, I have to question whether our local veterans will receive adequate services. If the VA took care of our veterans, there would be no need for other veterans' support organizations to step in. During the public hearing on this bill, the common theme from those who expressed support was "It's about time," and, quote, "We support it 100 percent." Our colleagues who attended the hearing all expressed support for the bill. I hope that support holds today. Mr. Chair, I urge the passage of this bill. We have a debt of gratitude to our veterans. They deserve much more than they are currently getting. We owe this to them. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tyree. At this time, I'd ask Mr. San Augustin to please rise, who will be sworn in, and as soon the OFB folks arrive, we'll have them sworn in. Senator Tom.
Under penalty of perjury, do you affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing more the truth? Mr. Chair, he's under oath. You may proceed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
With that...
Point of order.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
We're in the Committee of the Hall, presumably to be able to have a discussion with our fiscal team of the government of Guam, but they are not present at all, neither BBMR nor the Department of Administration. It sounds like they just refused to come, even though you invited them to be here. We've been waiting for them. We know that this session's been scheduled and coming up, and I can't see any reason why they're not here today, unless they just decided that they do not need to show up to the legislature anymore. If that's the case, then I would say we should call them again and wait until they arrive.
If that's the sentiments of the body, that we wait for them, we can wait for them.
Well, Mr. Chair...
I did invite them.
Yes.
And they did advise that they're in a meeting, and they also reminded me that the CRE report was provided, and it identifies over $45 million beyond the budget. So there is more than enough funds for this bill and the other two bills. More than enough. So the issue of where the money's at is identified already, but if the body wants to wait for them, then make that motion.
I don't want to wait anymore. We've been waiting for days. The issue is, if there is no need for us fiscal team to discuss with us appropriation bills, then there would be no need in the entire nation for legislatures to go into Committee of the Hall for fiscal teams. But there is a need.
There's a need to have the fiscal team? Yes, I did invite them. I did ask to waive the need for this Committee of the Hall, because the CRE report did provide the information, but I didn't get the votes for it. If you choose, Madam Speaker, you like to wait, we'll delay it. We'll go into recess and we'll wait.
I don't want to delay... Mr. Chair, it's unacceptable to me that we've been waiting for them, and now we're going to wait longer. But it's also unacceptable that we're going to do these appropriation bills, go into Committee of the Hall, make a special procedure to allow them to come in here, to be with us, to discuss these bills, to discuss the fiscal state of the government of Guam, and they refuse to attend. And I don't understand how that can be acceptable, even to you, Mr. Chair.
I asked them, I invited them, and they said they were in a meeting, Madam Speaker.
I know, but are we going to accept that? Is that going to be the standard now, whenever the legislature needs a fiscal team for the government of Guam, that they decide when they will show up or not?
No. That's not the standard, Madam Speaker. I think you know that, and you know better than that, they even say that. Anyway, we'll move along. Yeah, are you asking for a motion? If not...
Mr. Chair, that is the standard for Committee of the Hall. We come into Committee of the Hall for the fiscal team. For the fiscal team.
Madam Speaker, are you going to make a motion or not? If not...
For what, Mr. Chair?
I'm just waiting for the OFB to recess and wait, and ask them again to still come.
I don't want to recess. I want them to be attending. I want you to compel them to attend, Mr. Chair. That's the job of Committee of the Hall. That's their job.
I'm not going to discuss what my job is and what your job is.
Their job, Mr. Chair, is a fiscal team for the government.
Madam Speaker, I think we've already heard you. Senator Tom, did you have a comment you wanted to bring up?
Yes, sir. It's just a point of information, just issue a subpoena. They don't have to come here if they're not under subpoena. If they're under subpoena, they've got to be here. It's that simple. Thank you.
Madam Vice, do you have any comments you wanted to make, and we can move along?
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. At this time, I think, based on the bill and wanting to make sure that this legislation is proffered by the author, it proceeds. I have no problems proceeding, knowing that there is funding based on the CER report. I think it's important that, as we have four or five other measures, and there's been a timeline to try and complete them before tomorrow afternoon, I think it's important there was a recommendation to subpoena any of the administration, if they don't want to come in. That's your prerogative as a chair, Mr. Chairman, but I think that this facilitation of this bill moving forward is very important as it relates to providing resources to the veterans and making sure that these rules and regs in this legislation go through. So I'm open to move forward, sir. Senator Masi.
All right. We'll give it a few minutes recess, and I'll follow up with my staff. They're calling again. Senator Roy, you wanted to make a comment? Turn on the mic.
Mr. Chair, in respect to Mr. San Augustin, Jose San Augustin's time, he's been sitting here, I think, already two days, just sitting out in the lobby. Can we just proceed with him, with our colleagues, because aren't we going to ask him questions as well, or do we just cease until further notice? I just think that Mr. San Augustin needs to get back to his work, and if we can just entertain his in here right now and get it over and done with, then we can proceed back with the OFB and finance groups. I don't know. Sorry if that offends anyone. I'm just...
All right. And with that note, I see Senator, the author of the bill, nodding her head. Then we're going to continue on with Mr. San Augustin, and as soon as they finally all show up, we can ask them questions about the finances, on reference to the bill.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd also just like to thank Mr. San Augustin, Director San Augustin, for respecting the body enough to come when called, and, you know, maybe he could call his colleagues in the cabinet to do the same. This is my first term, Mr. Chair, but I don't think I've ever seen a Committee of the Hall that was a committee apart, because, yeah, I don't know if we can even call it Committee of the Hall if we don't have the finance people present to answer the money questions. That's all, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Understood. It is the first time also for me to see that. Senator Tyree, we're going to begin with you on the questions for Mr. San Augustin, and we'll go around on the first round, and when they do show up, we'll start the round again, one more time.
That sounds like a plan, Mr. Chair.
All right. Senator Tyree, we will begin with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I do believe you said you will be calling OFB, and, okay, so we will call them. And I have no objection to a subpoena as well. So, Mr. San Augustin, thank you so much for being here, especially regarding this bill and how it's going to help your agency or the Veterans Office, but most especially to help our veterans that are seeking medical help. We've met with many of them, and a lot of them, like 98%, all spoke about medical issues, being able to fill out forms, getting to their appointments, you know, providing that one-on-one assistance, especially if a veteran who just came out of the hospital has nobody there to pick them up, and just having that service to help these veterans. So, Mr. San Augustin, one of the inclusions of this legislation is to, first and foremost, the 364,000 that we have appropriated in this legislation, can you explain to us what that will cover, the 340,000?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that, Senator Telo. First of all, I just want to say thank you for introducing this bill. This bill, what it's going to do is allow us to hire three additional service representatives or individuals that are capable and are qualified to provide efficient information to the veterans that are seeking help. In addition to that, it'll be one individual who's going to be a driver for the vehicle, a disabled, an American disability ADA-compatible vehicle that be able to transport veterans to and from their appointments, wherever it might be. This is a long-time overdue bill, and I favor this bill. I hope your colleagues in here will support it as well. I am excited to put it into motion, but definitely what it will provide, not only the language here for disabled elderly, but many of our young veterans that also don't know where to go or where to start to get services. When we say specific to help, we will not be the one conducting the health assessment, but rather to take them to these locations where those services are going to be provided, or let them know where these services are going to be located if they're able to transport themselves to those locations. In addition, that we will be able to communicate with the community-based outreach clinic, the healthcare of the Pacific Leadership out of Oahu, so that we could be in sync as to why we decided to exist and make this program what it is, because definitely the veterans are more common to knowing where the Guam Veterans Affairs Office in Assen or the PD Cemetery in Assen is. They are not too familiar of where do they go for healthcare up at the community-based outreach clinic or to Naval Hospital. And I know many of them are lost as to where do they go for this type of help. So with this bill, allowing us to bring on board professionals that can administer and provide the assistance for the administrative piece of their applications, and also to let them know where these services are going to be at, but also assist in their appointments, assist in their scheduling, and assist on any type of issues that the individual veteran, elderly or young, are not aware of. And so we definitely have to bring on board folks that are wealth of information and actually have the patience and the passion to administer this kind of duty, and we're looking forward to it. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. I do have a question. Right now, does the Veterans Affairs have a vehicle?
So your question, Madam Senator, does the VA have a vehicle, not for transportation, ma'am, but vehicle for work, the... but vehicle for work, the trucks that we utilize for the cemetery? We do have, at one time, a van, but that is not suitable for any means of transportation for our veterans. The answer is no.
Okay, yeah, and that van stays in the cemetery area anyways?
That's correct. So, we removed it from the administrative, from Assen, because it's not a vehicle that is reliable, that you will utilize to pick up veterans, to take them to their location. But we definitely could use it for, just to run and pick up supplies, or gas, and whatnot. But to transport, it's not.
I heard that van is actually, when it rains, it leaks through the roof area, and it almost floods the van itself. So, I hope you guys can find some funding to fix that. Now, you said earlier, this would be able to fund three individuals to basically assist the veterans?
That's correct.
With their needs, and then one driver?
That's correct.
For transportation, and the van. So, is this 340,000 enough?
Based on our initial assessment, Madam, we were trying to see the actual cost of a top-of-the-line ADA vehicle. The research that I did took me to 70,000, $80,000 ADA. I was able to get Mr. Gomano to talk with DPW and get an idea of how much their transport vehicle, and we came up to like 120,000, give or take. Again, based on our research, and based on the salaries that we're looking at, and the type of individuals that we're gonna bring on board to provide these services, the 340,000 appears to be sufficient. But then again, you know, by the time we probably start to make this happen, give or take, it may go up, it might go where our requests might be at. But we will utilize these fundings to the best spirit of the law, to make sure that we use it for the right reason, and not just by a huge bus that we don't need.
Right. Thank you so much for that, because it's very important. I mean, some of our veterans are amputees, you know, that they need that additional assistance on the van. So, that's very important. Other than that, Mr. San Augustine, I appreciate you being here and advocating for the veterans on this island, and providing that extra assistance for them, especially in the healthcare department. I mean, our veterans are aging. They're truly aging. And what happens when you age? You discover all these health issues that come about. And even the younger generation, you know, the younger veterans that need that assistance, that care. They don't know, like you said, they don't know really where to go, and etc. But other than that, Mr. Chair, I believe that's all the questions I have for now. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. San Augustine.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Tom Fisher, do you have anything?
I do, sir, thank you. And Director San Augustine, thank you for coming this afternoon.
Thank you.
The transportation that you, the non-emergency transportation for eligible vets to and from a medical appointments and pharmacies, is that exclusive to on-island?
That's exclusive, it's a vehicle that we have to end up purchasing off-island.
Okay, so you're anticipating actually extending these services to Tripler, for example?
No, 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 just on Guam. I apologize. I probably misunderstood.
Just on Guam.
On-island, that's correct.
Okay, and then, I'm on page two, looking at the funding mechanism. It's 340,000 appropriated from the general fund, excess federal, or excuse me, excess revenues from 2024. Thereafter, the director shall include needed funding in the budget request. Does this mean that, okay, we give you $340,000 today, and when it comes up for a budget request, you'll ask for an additional 340,000?
That is correct, sir.
So, this would be an outlay of $680,000 for how many vans? Just in the next two years?
So, this will be just for one vehicle, three service employees, and one driver.
Okay, so, you would use, I assume that you'd use the 340,000 to buy the vehicle and hire some people, or?
That's correct.
Something like that. But next year, the next fiscal year, you will not need to buy a vehicle, and you will not need to hire any more individuals. Is that correct?
That is, that is the plan, yes, sir.
Okay, so, we, as a body, we would not expect to see, just for this line item, we would not expect to see an additional request for 340,000?
Possibly, that's if the cost of the vehicle does not go up. But also keeping in mind that there might be a possibility of requesting for, funding for the maintenance of the vehicle.
Okay, so, this 340,000, of course, I assume the vehicle's gonna be under some sort of warranty, but the 340,000 does not include such things as, you know, gasoline expenses and repair?
No, sir, no.
Okay, how many vehicles do you have right now?
So, your question is how many vehicles we have right now? We have actually two pickup trucks, frontiers, and one van. That are not for transportation.
Okay. And then, the veterans' healthcare assistance, of course, we have, what is this? This is Title X, Office of Veterans Affairs. This new Section 26837, what does it give you, other than purchasing the vehicle, I suppose? What authority or mission do you have to accomplish that you don't already have to pursuant to Chapter 67?
And that's a good question, sir. It allows me to provide more services to many of our veterans that are not able to find services within themselves. So, an example, they are not, unless you've had service or received service up at the C-BO, then you know that there are services that are provided for health. Unless you know that the Assen office exists, you will not have any idea where to go to get these help. Being able to bring on board these programs can allow us to do a more efficient outreach, to better assist our veterans, both young and old. If that makes sense to you.
Is this, it does. Is this restricted based on your status of discharge, your DD 214? In other words, either if you're dismissed, or dishonorable, or bad conduct discharge, can you still get services from your office?
And that's a good question, sir, because I'll tell you, the four times that I've attended the director's conference off-island, many of those conditions of the individual discharge are being reconsidered. And case in point, and you probably know, but if not, I'll just let you know that, you know, when you have a veteran that served for like 15 years, first time around, discharged and then re-enlists, right? Discharged and then re-enlists. And then all of sudden, in their 15-year with another job, or a job that's more stressed, the individual ends up getting in trouble after serving 15, 16 years, then you get a bad conduct discharge. So, what do we do with that? So, even with the ones that were discharged in Vietnam because of behaviors, or the ones that were discharged in Vietnam, not even during the Vietnam era, but just were discharged because of disciplinary or whatever action. The thing that's being recognized is we discharge an individual and put him out in the community without caring for the problem that they had encountered while they were in the service. So, many of that, to answer your question, is being reconsidered, that if they have a discharge of bad conduct, or anything that is not of honorable, we are, again, reconsidering it. We are looking at the status of the discharge, and resubmitting that into the VA for reconsideration of the individual status.
Okay, so the decision on who can get services based on discharge, is that controlled by you, or the Veterans Administration?
It's controlled under the big VA, under the Veterans Administration, the federal.
Okay, and so right now, I guess right now, the current standard is if you got a BCD, or you were dismissed as an officer, you probably are not eligible for the benefits?
And you're talking about as an officer, or as an enlisted, sir?
Well, if you're an officer, you get dismissed. If you are enlisted, bad conduct discharge, I assume.
Again, the commission of your conduct, and also what's in your DD 214, we will complement, we will entertain that DD 214, submit the report and the status to the big VA for them to make the determination that we unjustifiably discharge this individual without providing any type of help.
Okay. I appreciate that sometimes it's unmerciful, the way that kids, 18-year-olds who were dismissed, or got a bad conduct discharge for, I don't know, smoking dope or something. It just, it might seem a little unfair. And I just kinda bring that up, because I know that if you wanna get buried in the Guam Veterans Cemetery, you have to have an honorable discharge, or its equivalent. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and that's a double-edged sword, again, because like I mentioned, so you're dead four years discharged, right, honorably discharged, and then re-enlisted for another four? And then the next four, bad conduct discharge, which one do we take?
Yeah, I mean, it seems a little harsh. I wish there was a mechanism by which a veteran could appeal, or their family, rather, could appeal their exclusion from burial in the cemetery. But I guess that's something, because right now, it's mandatory. I think that's something that the legislature could look at, I suppose. Let me ask you that. If the legislature said that you, that there was an appeal, would that violate the veteran, big VA's policies?
The smart way is actually submit the individual's case, so that big VA can let us know whether it's a go or no go. If we were gonna do it at the legislative level, you know, we'll be, we'll end up burying the individual, and then we submit the individual's information to big VA. They either could come back and say, acknowledge, and we would go ahead and honor the action that we have taken, or they could come back and say, well, you purchased their own headstone on your own. Because the individual does not qualify to be buried.
For what it's worth, it would be my preference that we could decide that issue locally, instead of waiting for Washington DC to determine. But anyway, for what it's worth, I'd prefer that you or your office had, was the appellate body for refusal. But, okay, last question I had was, you have a provision in here for filling prescriptions, coordination, appointments, creation of medical records, maintenance of medical documentation files, and other services that would enhance. This is 67111B. I see that there is no provision for HIPAA compliance. I think that, I would just submit to you, sir, that maybe we could amend this bill to require HIPAA compliance, because otherwise, you guys are gonna get in hot water. But when you're collecting medical documentation files and things like that, you're going to have to be HIPAA compliant.
And you're absolutely right, sir. That's why I mentioned that the most consideration of the folks that will be providing these services are veterans' service representative, those folks that have already done their qualification to be sure that they are in compliance with HIPAA.
Okay.
You're right.
All right, thank you, sir. And you were a Marine, right?
Yes, sir.
Hoorah.
Hoorah, and thank you for your service, sir.
Yes, and thank you for your service. I was Navy, and Joe was Army, and Senator Dwayne was Army. I think that covered it, but thank you.
Thank you for the shipwright, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Fisher. Proceed to, Senator Perez, do you have any question for Mr. San Augustine?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Director San Augustine for being here. Yeah, so this bill is, I think it's a really good bill. We definitely need to improve our services to the veterans when it comes to healthcare. And I know the, one of the issues is obviously getting access off-island. So, maybe if you can just speak to the bill, how it would improve access to veterans here in Guam?
Well, that's a good question. I think, Madam Senator, the first thing that really is important for my office to do is do a better job at getting the veterans to register. And I say this because this continues to bother me, that wherever I go out there, you ask the individual whether they have served in the military, and they'll say yes. You could go to any department store, or any place out here, and run into an individual and ask them if they've served, and they will say yes, and you would ask them, have you registered with our office? And the thing is, you get answers like, no, because I don't know where to go, or no, because I don't need it. And I ran into someone just like that almost every day. And so, I just wanted to bring that up, because for us to do this, it's important to be able to bring those numbers and those individuals in, so that we could provide them the services, right? But to answer your question, ma'am, these services is able to expand our capability to provide assistance to the family, to the veterans specifically, as to where they need to go to get those help. And many of them don't know. And let me give you one case. So, this individual works at ERC. ERC up in Braga, got out after four years, and the individual doesn't even know that he is entitled to benefits. Within six months, and I told him to come down to the Assen office, within six months, he's got an ID card that's connected. And so, what he did, what they did was, it went down to the office, registered. We send him up to the C-BO, Community-Based Outreach Clinic, registered. They gave him an ID card, now he's able to go on base and do his own thing. So, those things that were really lacking, because we don't have the manpower to be able to do that outreach that is much needed. But we have folks that go off-island, and I've used this, and these are true stories. You know, the individual flew off, but when he got to Hawaii, didn't know where to go. Nor was the folks that were supposed to transport the individual knew that the individual was there. So, somehow, the communications between the individual flying in, and the transport there, and it's painful when you're going there for medical, and you don't have the folks to pick you up, to take you to where you should go. So, by standing up this particular initiative here, we can link that. We can assure that, hey, let me see your paperwork, let's go through your checklist. You got everything, you got your tickets, you got your appointment date, you got your doctor, this is where you go, and this is who is gonna pick you up. And then we'll call the other end and say, are we confirmed, or email that this individual's coming in that day and this hour, and I'm ready to pick them up. But also, on the other note, there's there's individuals that fly themselves there, and let me do this. So, there was one that came from delegate Moylan, where he wrote to big VA, when the person goes to Hawaii and the services is not there, why does the individual have to pay their way to go elsewhere, right? Remember that one, ma'am? And that concerned me, because that means the VA screwed up. Why would they send him there in the first place if the services wasn't there? Why didn't they just fly him to California? And if Hawaii was a connection, what should be a connecting flight into California? So, those kind of things will be issues that we should be able to capture and say, well, if the service is not in Hawaii, you should not land him there, house him, and then let him know the next day that there's no services available. We should be able to catch that and say, are the services available there or not? That makes sense, ma'am?
Absolutely. Yeah, and so that brings, thank you for that. That brings me to my other question. I know we were working on another bill in regards to Medicaid, and, you know, making sure that our computer systems, our IT systems are connected to Medicaid. So, does the VA have a similar program? So, that can really facilitate this seamless healthcare access?
So, that's a good question, Madam. I think they do. Many of our discussion when we meet up with the big VA is to actually merge and make this a transparent system. And so, to briefly answer your question, me not being so smart in those areas, it's been talked about during my conferences with the VA, that these have to be systems that integrate and are transparent, so that it lessens any type of hardship, or additional things that the veterans has to deal with.
Yeah, so, because this is an appropriation bill, so it's a perfect time. If you have a system in mind, and the cost of that, we can include this in this bill. So, do you have any estimates, or the type of system? Or, in general, what does the VA use to help make sure that everything's seamless?
So, we kind of have an idea, Madam. The thing is, the software that we're looking at to be compatible with what other, the other states, what I'm aware of is only six states are utilizing that particular software. So, for now, I think I would want to dig into it more, why is it that? So for now, I think we, I would want to dig into it more, why is it that only a few of the states are using, utilizing such a software and not every, every state?
What about the other jurisdictions? Do they use a different kind of software? Does every state have this, have access to this type of system?
It's kind of, each one of them have their own different system.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, you know, and I pause on this, and you, I'm glad you brought that question up, because it's been an issue that we've been talking about since I came on board. What system is it that can integrate into one so that, you know, that the same information is there for everyone? And so it appears that, you know, it depends on your background in IT. You know, this is best fit for your state, but it might not be best fit for ours.
Okay. Thank you. Maybe, maybe offline you can ask staff regarding more details on that?
Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're very welcome, Senator Perez. Senator Shelton, you have the floor.
Senator Perez, you have the floor. Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and certainly to Mr. Snoggsy for being with us this afternoon. Appreciate the opportunity to co-sponsor this bill with you, and certainly for those of us that are a family of veterans, you, your dad's retired Air Force, mine was retired Navy. And my dad, as I've mentioned before, as a result of his service-related industry injuries in his time that he served in Vietnam, as a result of that, his health-related issues were determined to be as a result of his service. It was a long and winding process, and back then, we really didn't have the level of support and the opportunity that exists now. And we even know that what we're getting now, we need more of, because there are more veterans out there that we can reach, even though we see other organizations that have since come into being to provide that assistance. But it's not that easy. I mean, to go through the process, especially back then, it's almost fifteen years ago. At the time, Fred Gofigan was the head of the Veterans Affairs Office, and he actually informed me, which I was not aware, because prior to changes in Congress, if you were retired military, you were not eligible for these benefits, because you were already getting your, your medical assistance through your retire, your retirement status. And I found out through Fred, Mr. Gofigan, that, because his father also was a veteran, a disabled veteran. And that's how we first found out, that even though my dad was retired Navy, he was eligible for this through the Veterans Affairs Office. And that began a long and winding process that took a lot of time and several submittals of documents, repeated submittals of the same documents to the Hawaii office, and follow-up, follow-up appointments at Naval Hospital, so they can verify, you know, that indeed your ailments are service-related. And at the time, we had people like Ben Guerrero, who himself was a disabled veteran, who actually, through the help also of John Gerber, if you recall, up in, up in their property in Chalampago, provided a space, he had a container, a container office, and veterans would come there on a regular basis, almost a daily basis, to get help from Mr. Guerrero, who's also since passed. You know, to get support on what to do, what documents do they need to fill out, what information do they need to provide? And it really made a big difference. And my dad, who is someone who is very persistent, someone who didn't give up on anything, really wanted to give up on this process. And just said, you know, I don't want to hassle with it anymore. And imagine when you're elderly, you're sickly, you know, it just isn't, you don't want to spend time anymore. And, you know, it's one of those moments, I said, no, we're going to finish this. We started it, we're going to finish it. And fortunately, I'm glad we did, so that in his time while he was still here, he got to receive those benefits. And my mom now is a survivor, a spouse, a survivor, and that's very important, I know, mister, to be able to get that information out there, because when, when your spouse passes, those benefits pass on to your surviving spouse, which really makes a big difference, because the income you receive is not taxable. It's a direct benefit that you receive the rest of your life. My mom is a survivor of my dad, receives those benefits, as many others. And there's many others we can still reach out there and provide that help, because not everyone has someone in the family that can directly assist them. So having the services certainly that can be provided make a big difference. I wanted to ask Mr. Snoggsy with regards to your, the passage of this legislation and getting the additional staff capacity, and then also, I know Senator Snoggsy has his bill that will be heard today as well, that will provide additional staff capacity. Will you be able to accommodate that? Because I know your office currently in Aston really is, has a lot of limitations. So how will you be able to absorb all this so that more direct support and more accessible office space can be provided to our veterans out there?
So I thank you for that, Madam Senator. The thing is, the veterans need the services now. And I will work with the administration to continue to push, to find me a place to be able to house all these individuals. In the meantime, I will proceed forward with the hiring, I will proceed forward with the procedures of how we're going to do this, and then start farming the representatives out throughout the different villages to be able to do the work within those, the mayor's office, for example, and not having to rely them to be around our small office to provide these services. Though, that there, I will say, is the smartest way to do this, because we're actually out there within the community, and the folks will be easier to come to that respective village, because that's where they're from, so north, south, and in the middle. And so it's something that we'll plan out so that we do not put this bill or not be able to utilize the purpose of this particular bill and the other bill that's being introduced. I think, and I know that we'll be able to utilize those individuals in the most efficient fashion possible without hampering safety, right? But the bottom line is, we want to be able to start providing the services most immediately to our veterans.
Well, I'm certainly happy to hear that, and I think we look forward to that engagement, especially as you mentioned at the village level. You know, it's, it's the benefits that the veterans receive that they've earned, but more importantly, I mean, they're a major contributor to our economy as well. I mean, when you look at the number of veterans we have and those that are eligible to receive these benefits, you know, it multiplies. And they're homegrown and they stay here, and they live here. And I think every opportunity we have to have them receive these services, you know, we can say, we appreciate your service, that's nice, but I think real appreciation is shown when we actually provide that support base that they need, especially in an area where certainly your employees will be able to help them facilitate their application, so they're not trying to figure out what's where, what they need, how they can move their applications forward and get the benefits that they're eligible for. I think the support that you give is really going to multiply to benefit the veterans, to benefit their families, and more importantly, and the additional benefit that we as a community receive is the additional millions and millions of dollars a year that pour into our community that our veterans reinvest back here. So we certainly look forward to that. I'm sure these bills are going to pass. I'm sure the governor, I can actually say, I'm sure she'll sign them. But, but it definitely will, will answer a need, and you saw that with the public hearing, you experienced that in your capacity, having served the number of years you have. And now you'll have the opportunity and tools and resources to help get that outreach out there. So we appreciate your efforts and look forward to the benefits that will come to our veterans and their families as a result of this. So thank you so much for being here and your patience as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Blaus, do you have any questions? None. Senator Parkinson? None. Senator Barnett, do you have anything for Mr. Snoggsy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I just want to thank Director Snoggsy for being here, and I guess I could just kind of support the bill. And actually, I have an amendment that I'm going to proffer in a little bit, that I believe would give the director the ability and authority to immediately begin providing these services while you figure out the rules and regs. But I guess I just had more of a logistical question, so you're going to buy one van, and I know from attending the public hearing that there's a pretty great need for these services, right? So maybe if you could just run me through a typical day, these services are up and running, and you have the van, what would just a typical day entail?
Well, Senator, let me give you an example. When I was at the VA office back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, we had an agreement with GRTA for one of those little bugs, right, the little van that they have. And it was supposed to be a trial to determine how often we utilize it to transport veterans. I could tell you that it's been utilized, if not every other day, maybe every day. And so here's one thing that we kind of probably have forgotten, right? Is that we could pick them up, drop them off at their respective appointments. But we also have veterans that are being discharged from the hospital that don't have transportation home. In saying that, it is very crucial to understand that the type of vehicle that we get and the type of driver, and those folks that are going to be accompanying the veterans when they're being transported, that they actually have CPR and lifesaving skills, very important. So I'll say this to you there, Senator, during my time, there were two individuals. One was up and I had to pick him up at Naval Hospital and take him up to Chalan Guaca, back road of Mangilo to Chigo. Vietnam vet, both he and the brother. He was in there, let out after a week, because he was good to go. He was good to go. Picked him up, took him to his home, wasn't able to figure out where the road is at. So we had to drive up a little bit further, we found his home. When we found his home, it was lucky that I was the one that took him home and none of the females, because the individual was not able to walk into his house from approximately two hundred feet. Two hundred feet, because they had vehicles on the driveway, blocking his driveway, and there's no way that you could even use a wheelchair to wheel that individual in. I used my best skills, thought of me in the military, and I gave the guy a fireman's carry into his home without doing any much damage to his body. That's one. Another one was indebted, where the individual again was released from the hospital, they called, can you pick us up? And I got in the vehicle and went and picked him up. So those are the kind of services that this particular initiative is going to, is going to do. If not every day, once, twice a day, or every other day.
So Director Snoggsy, in between all of those, you know, running the veterans to and from, the appointments, discharges, I'm assuming the bill also says here that you're going to be doing things like filling prescriptions, picking up?
Yes.
Prescription?
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm just doing the math in my head, and I don't even think one vehicle would be enough, because I'm just imagining a scenario where, you know, you've got a couple people at the CBOC, maybe one at Naval Hospital, maybe someone has to pick up their high-blood medication or whatever. So I just don't want to underestimate the need, right? So I don't know if you have to shake the tree and get some of that ARP money, get your, everyone's driving around in new vehicles, government vehicles I see out there, so.
Yeah, so, sure, I see your point, and great point. For me, what I see too is, this is, this is like a trial and error. And if it, if it builds up, the demand is there, then, then I could bluff and come to the legislature or go where else and say, I need more money, because there it is, we're using it, and here's the trip ticket, and here's where we take him to, and this is what we utilize the vehicle for. But to just get two and not, let's, let's make it a pilot program, right?
Right.
And the way I work is, if it's efficient, then we build on it. But to have two vehicles and just use one, that's how I work.
Oh, yeah, no. And I mean, I got no problem with the way you work, I just don't want to end up in a scenario where we've got one vehicle and the demand really is, you know, more suited to three vehicles, especially in light of the recent GAO report that came out about, really, the terrible services that our veterans are receiving. And so this is one way, I know that the local government can kind of pick up the slack. So I thank you for speaking on the measure, and again, for your attendance here.
Absolutely, and thank you in believing in the bill and the veterans. Thank you.
Okay, my colleagues, we have the Director of BBMR here. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions for the panel? And he's already been sworn in. Do you have any questions on the panel? Either Mr. Lester or Mr. Snoggsy?
I have questions for Mr. Snoggsy first. I'll do what everyone else did.
Oh, you did swear me? Oh, okay. Let me have him sworn in, sir.
Under penalty of perjury, you affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Mr. Chair, you may proceed.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator, thank you, Mr. Carlson. I assume you were sworn in before you entered. Madam Speaker?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Snoggsy, Director, for being here this, since this morning, in anticipation of this committee of the whole session, in commit, in anticipation of our discussion of this very important bill, as you described it. Just wanted to ask you a couple of questions. So first of all, you believe this is part of the Office of the Veterans Affairs duties to provide services like this? This is a good fit?
You know, the big VA is doing everything they could, as evidence that they were able to provide a van, so that those that have medical appointments are then transported using that particular van. But it's not within the reach of those that do not have appointment. Like I just indicated, the veterans that get discharged from the hospitals, I don't think that's within their scope of transportation. This particular piece, the VA is doing their best, but we need to do our part too. And I solely believe that this will enhance the needs of our veterans here in Guam. The VA or Pacific Healthcare, the Pacific might have some reservations, because it appears that we're taking over what their sole responsibility is. But I don't think it's going to hurt when we're saying, we're not going to do any surgeries, but provide information, directions, and where to go. That's it. And assistance in administration, you know, with regards to their application. And I think, I think they're going to be very grateful that we're able to assist in that area. It makes their job easier. But it also, the thing is, we're going to be able to provide more efficient service to our veterans, because that service is there, now they know where to go to, to get that help. Does that make sense, ma'am?
Yes, thank you. So this is a service that in other parts of the United States, the VA provides?
So let me, let me, let me go this route. Not, not fully. So the, the VA transportation that you see with that nice bus, that just started last December. Keep in mind, though, that, you know, in other jurisdictions, they have more transportation availability. We don't. We don't. But I could say that for disabled, they more likely do have, for disabled, right? And for here, for, so for us here, we're kind of accommodating both sides, those that don't have transportation and those that are disabled, that we're able to transport them one way or, one way or another.
All right. I was, yeah, trying to see if this is something that the VA provides elsewhere, is not providing on Guam fully, and there are gaps here in their service to the veterans, which seemed to be the sentiment at the public hearing and even by your office. And, and also, you know, whether this is something that your office is, you believe part of, you know, should be part of your duties to accomplish. There was a law passed not too long ago, in the last maybe one or two terms, called the Veterans Bill of Rights, which also assigned to your office, access to healthcare, to increase veterans' access to healthcare through eligible healthcare coverage and treatment based on service. The office shall develop and operate veterans' health navigator services to increase access and coverage and service. And so they describe, the office, your office, shall identify, train, and deploy veteran health navigators. Do you have those positions?
No, I don't.
All right. So this was something that was, I guess, mandated, but just not fulfilled yet. Yet you believe this is an urgent need, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, so those others who testified as well, and I, I've heard this in my entire life, they, that almost every veteran agrees there are urgent needs and gaps in the services. And so the governor's liaison, Mr. Moffness, he also said that this bill was overdue, it's about time we- it's about time we start moving on with our state office. Mr. Nick Francisco, Commander of the Order of the Purple Heart, of course, was in support of increasing the services and the office capacity of the Office of the Veterans Affairs. He told the story, remember, about how he almost died if not for his daughter advocating for him and calling Hawaii, literally calling Hawaii and making sure he could get out of the Naval Hospital and get over there. And he described that for other veterans as well, these gaps, I guess, that were, if not for the assistance of someone else to help you in your time of need, to make the calls, do the electronic, or physically transport you, the services are, you cannot avail of the services.
Yes.
And so again, Mr. Ralph Terlai, he also testified, and he talked about how our veteran population in particular is aging, or it was his experience up at CBAC that so many of them were aging. And they are the ones who are in need of these services, so it's a special population as well, in need of exactly what you're describing, transportation and these navigators or assistants. And he talked about, you know, for the medication, whether it's going to be by mail, which is what they're being required to do right now, or why could they not do it locally? And then he talked about how the answer he was given as to why psychiatric evaluations or those group sessions could not be done in person and they had to be done electronically, the answer he was given was because there's no room provided for them to do that in, like a consultation room. These things seem, yeah, I mean, we've heard this repeatedly, I guess, including the issue that you described about the transportation to Hawaii and then, you know, no one to help you when you get there. But then Ginger Cruz also testified and said it's, like, the government of Guam needs to be unified in our discussions with the VA on this. Do you think that that's the problem, that we're not unified in our discussions with the Veterans Administration in this regard, and that's why there are gaps?
You know, Madam Speaker, the Governor has been engaging quite so often with the Secretary of the VA when she takes off to DC. Let me tell you this again, there's been four times that I've gone off island to meet up with other Directors and the Director of the BIG VA to discuss the issues that we're having within each respective jurisdiction. We're not immune from what the other jurisdictions are suffering as well, or experiencing, but let me say this, and I want to say this to the body, that I appreciate your consideration and desire to continue to help our veterans here in Guam. In my language and in your language, in Chamorro, manama si, manama si. And the reason why I continue to do what I want, what I'm doing is because I want to help them, I want to give back. I want to give back and help our veterans in every way I could, because if we help the veterans become better citizens, that will take a lot of burden away from the family. And are we doing enough, based on what I see, based on what the Governor does when she goes to DC, and based on what I do when I go to DC and all these different places where the Directors Conference take place? Those jurisdictions are having their own hardship as well. And so the reason why I want to address this body personally, because what you do and are about to do for the veterans is something that is really needed. No one's going to do it but us. The BIG VA is going to do their own thing. I did ask for more money, I did ask the BIG VA, would you give us federal funds so I could hire cemetery workers under the federal fund, and they flatly said out, no. So both the Governor and I were doing the best we could. I could tell you too, that the VA will come out and say, no, if it's not realistic. But we'll fight to what we know we need help on, and hopefully they'll make the right decision that darn, we're building bases in Guam, Guam is the forward edge of the battleground, we should be able to assist them, provide them more resources. Hope that makes sense, ma'am?
It makes sense to me, I don't understand why it doesn't make sense to them. But, Mr. Chair, my time is up, I do have more questions, however.
Senator Tiedegui, we will now begin with you in reference to the finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Speed right through this.
Okay.
Okay?
Mr. Chair, my question is to Lester Carlson from BBMR. Based on this legislation, is there enough funds in the excess revenue to cover this
Thank you, Senator Tiedegui. We just transmitted the fiscal note for Bill 308. It has a running tally of not only the CRER that shows $46 million net of appropriations made by this body from FY24 revenues, it also nets out the Healthy Future Fund shortfall, and we still arrive at $46 million above the appropriated level. 308 was, I believe, introduced by the Speaker. And there are $75 million worth of appropriation bills that are out there, and we have $46.1 million available. So when you take a look at something we just transmitted, it's really a policy decision of the body here, to be able to decide which one of these bills gets passed and forwarded on. So the answer is yes, but, you know, be aware that to date, we have $75.5 million worth of appropriation bills that haven't been heard or passed. $46 million of general fund revenue to support some of these things, but the priority really is to be determined by this body.
Okay, so there is money, okay? That's all the questions I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Fisher, do you have anything?
Thank you very much, sir. And Mr. Carlson and Mr. Guerrero, thank you for coming down here. I just want to clarify something. Mr. Carlson, when did you learn about this hearing?
2:40 this afternoon, I got a text from OFB. I was here at 3:15, so it was 35 minutes from the time I was notified to come down.
Okay, so you came down here voluntarily, obviously?
Yes, I did.
And you came down here as promptly as you could get here?
I had to stop by the office and pick up this material first, but yes, I did.
Okay, so you weren't blowing off the legislature or anything like that, right?
Sir, I wasn't blowing off the legislature, but in all fairness, I was just made aware of this at 2:40.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. I wanted to clarify what you were just going through about the amount of money that we have obligated versus how much we have. Did you say that we have appropriation bills that have been heard or not heard in the amount of $86 million?
$75.5 million, including this bill for Veterans Affairs, $268, which is $340,000.
And then we just heard a comment that, oh, there is money, I'm not sure that there is money. You said that we've got all these outlays, but how much money do we actually have according to the CRER?
$46.1. So there's more than enough money to take care of this measure, which was the question from Senator Tiedegui. However, all we're doing is pointing out to the body that there are a number of bills appropriating funds from FY24 excess general fund revenue. That totals $75.5 million. This bill is among them.
Wow, okay. So I happen to believe that forty-some million dollars is less than seventy-some million. What do you think?
I believe you're right.
Yeah, all right. Well, I think we're going to have to be a little more disciplined in this body. Okay, thank you very much, sir.
I hope they clarified that there's, bills introduced equates to 75, but I have not, in my office, released $75 million worth of bills to be entertained by this body. Just want to make sure that's clear. Senator Roy, do you have any question for any of the finance folks on the panel? And if none, we'll move on.
No, I just wanted to thank them for being here, very appreciative of all the veterans' services and their families, so, you know, let's get it over and done with and move on. Thank you.
Thank you. Senator Perez, do you have anything?
Yeah, I do. This is for BBMR. So the windfall that we just received, can you explain the source of that? I guess we weren't expecting that amount to come through, can you explain where that money came from?
We transmitted the CRER last week, and the information is contained in the CRER.
Okay. For the public's benefit, can you describe the source of it?
How about if you read it this time?
Yeah, can you read it for us?
No, can you read it this time? This time, can you read it?
Yeah.
Since you weren't aware of it, can you read it?
Yeah, those questions for you. This is how it works, Mr. Carlson.
For the public, on page three, we show the results of the April general fund collections, and we compare it to the amount that was adopted by this body. We also take into account the appropriation measures that were passed by this body using fiscal '24 general fund excess revenue. They are enumerated and described as Bill 37-49, or Public Law 37-49, GPA credit round four, $15,800,000. Public Law 37-58, which is the Gas Tax Relief Act, $7.8 million. Public Law 37-46, GPA credit round five, $15.8 million. Guam Housing Corporation received $500,000, and the Office of Veterans Affairs received $50,000, for a total of $40 million and $29,000. You take that from the $95.7 million that we've collectively received in revenue to date, and that, after you net out the Healthy Future Fund shortfall of $9.9 million, brings you to $41.6 million of general fund revenue received as of April, that is above the adopted levels and includes measures passed by this body, the passage of the Budget Act.
Okay, you were reading off the appropriations, but I was asking about the source of money, the source of extra revenues.
Yes, and I said the general fund.
Yeah, but if you break it down, what is the primary source of the revenue?
Income taxes in total is $52 million more at this point in time than what was adopted. Business privilege taxes amount to about $40 million more, and there's a nominal amount for federal sources of $771,000. So that brings you to the $95,778,769 in general fund revenues, primarily from income taxes and business privilege taxes, that we calculate we have received to date over what we projected to date to receive.
Okay, and your analysis, is this a stable source of revenue? Is this going to be sustainable? Or is this happening due to one particular anomaly in our economy?
We have had this performance in the general fund for more than two years, so the budgeting process, and albeit conservative, which is a good thing, has produced general fund surpluses over the last three fiscal years. So this is not a fluke, it's not an anomaly, it's how the economy is performing.
And it has been consistently income tax and BPT?
Yes.
So we're looking at $100 million, close to $100 million, and you're saying that this is consistent with how many years back?
At least the last two fiscal years, '22, '23.
Okay, and then what do you attribute to the revenue above what was expected?
BPT is the taxes that people pay for the amount of business that they do, so you've got a lot in retail and a lot in construction. The taxes are primarily individual income taxes, $21 million to date, $4 million in corporate, and the one thing that everybody should be very happy about is $26 million in withholding taxes. So that means people in Guam are working, people in Guam are paying their taxes, and employers are dutifully remitting those taxes.
So is it safe to say it's coming from construction? Because right now, tourist industry hasn't fully recovered.
Construction and retail.
This question is for Steve Guerrero. What is your assessment of the increase in revenues, and is this sustainable?
If you're referring to the increases in revenues that the government has enjoyed collecting over the last three years, I agree with Mr. Carlson, it is coming from both the construction and retail side of the economy. Is it sustainable? We've got two years of solid history that shows that going forward, and even in FY24, it shows the same trend that we're seeing in the last couple of years. So taking that into account, if you're asking me if it's sustainable to a level that we have appropriated up to FY24, I would say yes. We are in the process of preparing the FY25 budget, and of course, that FY25 budget will be predicated on the way the economy was, is, and will be going forward. So his assessment and my assessment will probably be the same, yes.
Okay, a question from Mr. Carlson. So we are expected to receive, I guess, reimbursement for funds that were taken off the top for Section 30 funds for war claims, and so that program ended, I believe, in 2022, with money that was not, you know, basically, we're expected to receive money back. To your knowledge, what, do we have an amount that is going to be returned to Guam, and is there a timeline for that? And how would we get it back? Where would it appear on this balance sheet?
Uh, Senator, I'm not aware of anybody reimbursing us for war claims.
No, the, the idea, remember DOA, I'm sorry, the Treasury Department, US Treasury Department, was holding on to, um, millions of dollars from section thirty rather than being remitted to Guam. And so the, the program ended in twenty-twenty-two, where, uh, not all the money was actually handed out. So that's what I'm talking about. You understand?
Yes, I understand, but I don't, I am not aware of any of that money being slated to, uh, be returned. It went to the Foreign War Claims Commission, who adjudicated the war claims. And from my understanding, and I agree with you, it looks like we're done, but I'm not aware of any funds that are slated to be returned.
Yeah, there is, uh, some to be returned to, back to Guam, because I remember in one of the committee of the hold, Director Byrne mentioned that there was only so much that was claimed. And so, which means there's a lot more to come back. If the money were to be returned, uh, let's say in this fiscal year, uh, where would that be, how would that be returned to Guam?
If it was, and I'm not aware of it being imminent, but it would come back into the general fund, and it would be subject for, uh, legislative appropriation.
Okay. All right. A question for Director Sinagastin. So, uh, I'm pulling up something regarding, um, veterans' care and use of technology. And, uh, so does the Office of Veteran Affairs have the capability to do telehealth or work with partners on Guam in regards to telehealth? There's also something called My Health.
We, help that.
Oh, hold on. Senator Perez.
Yeah.
I had this restart to cover the finance. We already completed with Mr. Sinagastin. Okay, so we're gonna finish off specifically on this side. All right? I said that earlier, when we started out, we said, Mr. Sinagastin, we're gonna go down the line on the first round to cover Mr. Sinagastin, who is here. As soon as finance comes in, and it happened to come in when Speaker was speaking. That's why she asked questions. So if, if you can refer your question to the second round to Mr. Sinagastin. Okay, just so we can finish off on the finance, so then everybody knows on the same sheet. Okay? Do you have any other questions for the finance folks? I'm just trying to complete this so that everybody's on track.
Okay. Uh, all right. So I think that's my main, main question. Thank you.
Okay, I'll, I'll remind you about the questions you have. Senator Amanda, do you have anything for the finance side of the panel? Finance only.
Yes, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. If I could ask, um, it is a finance question, but to both the director and Mr. Carlson, when we passed the bill in the last legislature, the Veterans Bill of Rights, there was a five hundred thousand dollar appropriation to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office to help them hire health navigators and to pay for, uh, other needs. And at that time, if I recall in that public hearing, the, there were folks who were being trained, and there were, was going to be an attempt to hire at least five health navigators. Mr. Carlson, can you confirm that that money was given to the Guam Veterans Affairs Office from that public law?
Uh, Senator Shelton, uh, thank you for that, uh, great question. Um, the CRER on page three only highlights the appropriations that were made, uh, in this fiscal year, and there's only a fifty thousand dollar appropriation to the Veterans Affairs. So if the appropriation that you're talking about, uh, was made subsequent, like in the last fiscal year, then, um, then I will direct the question to Mr. Sinagastin.
Mr. Sinagastin, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow, this was public law thirty-six dash eighty-four, Mr. Sinagastin passed in the thirty-six Guam Legislature. So it would have been a previous fiscal year.
Yeah, um, Senator, uh, I was somewhat familiar with that five hundred thousand. The reality of it is it was never appropriated to my agency. There was not any movement, uh, taken to entertain that particular bill.
Okay, it wasn't just a bill, it was a public law, signed into law, and so that five hundred thousand dollar appropriation was not given to you. Is that correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay. Mr. Carlson, would you be able to confirm that for us?
Uh, asking staff assistance.
Okay, thank you very much. That's my question. I do support the bill, the intent of the bill. I wanna follow up because we have given resources in the past, and so I wanna make sure that these, this new bill is going to help aid what we've given in the past and build upon that. But it seems that that movement hasn't even happened. And so I'd like to hear a little bit of that background, if possible, so that we can ensure these health navigators are hired now if this appropriation is to be given. Thanks, Mr. Sinagastin.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Luan, do you have any question for the finance side?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, not for the finance folks, but if, uh, you're done with the finance, I tried to get here as soon as possible. I had constituents that needed government assistance, and I had to deal with them. So if, uh, if you're, if you dispose of the finance folks, I would like to ask one final question with Mr. Mr. Sinagastin, if possible.
You wanna ask?
When, when, when you're done with the finance.
Okay.
I, I can, yeah, I, if you could come back to me, and I just have a, a quick question for Mr. Mr. Sinagastin, if, if possible, after the finance has been disposed of.
Once the finance is done, then we'll be in the second round, then you can catch up.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much.
All right. Senator Blod, do you have any question for the finance folks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the breakdown. And, um, just to reiterate, Mr. Carlson, there's close to about seventy-five point five million. Is that anticipated or, um, end of the year? Or is that?
No, sir, it's the sum of all the bills that have been introduced.
Oh, I apologize.
Yes.
It is sum of all the bills?
Yes.
And so the forty-six point one million is already what has been tapped?
No, sir. Uh, forty-six million dollars is the bottom line on page three of this consolidated revenue and expense report that says net, uh, unobligated projected FY twenty-four general fund revenue.
Is that to date?
Yes, well, it was published last week, yeah.
Okay. So to date, we've got about forty-six point one mil. But we've got seventy-five point five mil in the hopper. Is, that's what we've got, right? So we're about, short about twenty-nine point four mil if we were to accommodate all seventy, every, everything.
That's correct.
Okay. Is there anything else other than what we're discussing here with regard to what we can anticipate in as far as expenditure? Or payment that we should, that we, we should anticipate or expect over the, over the next few months?
Not from us.
Nothing that you know of, that comes from. Okay, thank you.
Senator Perez, do you have anything for finance? None. Madam Speaker, since you began, the finance folks, this will.
Oh, no, I only asked him.
Okay, then, then this will be.
Thank you.
All right.
Sis, masi, Mr. Chair. And, uh, Lester, uh, Director, thank you very much for coming down here promptly. That was not what was represented to us. We were told, you were told since yesterday, and we're just refusing to come. So I very much am very grateful that you're here, and I thank you for that. And your discussion, actually, I believe it's very helpful, not only to us, but to the public who listens as well, to hear it directly from you, your explanation with all your experience. My question is, um, oh, there was a suggestion that, um, Guam needs to pursue increased grant funding and that the VA can add Guam under rural grant eligibility. There's federal money available for more vehicles and support along the lines of this bill. Are you aware of that, Mr. Carlson? Or any attempts by the, uh, the administration to apply for this type of grant funding? Or, yeah, to ask the VA to add Guam under that?
Uh, no, ma'am. As a matter of fact, uh, I think Director Sinagastin has had personal interaction, as he stated earlier. So if, if that opportunity was made, uh, known to him, I'm sure he would have asked. But I don't know if it.
All right, and, um, the five hundred thousand previously appropriated, if, if that was not yet transmitted, can that still be transmitted?
Uh, Senator Shelton, my staff is saying that, uh, the fund source was from EITC reimbursements. If the fund source was from EITC reimbursements, um, we're not.
There was none.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. When, when you did the fiscal note for the bill that we're talking about right now, you, there's a line in here that says, uh, despite efforts from BBMR to obtain input from the Office of Veterans Affairs through electronic communications on April sixteen and April twenty-second, no official comments had been received as of the date of the fiscal note. What comments were you seeking or input? What, what do we need to get the full picture on this fiscal note?
Ordinarily, what we do is we contact the agency that's the recipient of the funding to do what you guys are doing, to kind, to kind of just make sure that the bill is in line with their mission, uh, how they're looking at, uh, expending the money, utilizing the money. The, the fund source is not necessarily, uh, given the general fund revenue that we have, a big concern. It's more of what it is that they would be using the money for. So I know that, uh, there was representation at the public hearing, which is good. But when, in, uh, like, just for an example, we got your, uh, I believe you're the author, right, for three oh eight?
The gas tax relief?
Uh, GPA?
A GPA?
Oh, gas, gas tax relief, yes. So we got this request, uh, on the twenty-fourth at two forty-nine PM. So we had a three-day holiday. We tried to turn these things out pretty quick for you guys. Uh, my.
You have been doing a good job.
Thank you. I mean, we tried to do it certainly within five days, just so that you have the information. So when we make, uh, attempts to communicate with the recipient agency and we don't get a response, we wanna tell you that, not to, you know, diss them or anything like that, but just to be open that, you know, we did make the attempt. So that's what we do.
All right. For the most part, we have, for the hearings that I've held on bills, they, I've almost always had a fiscal note, maybe once or twice not, but otherwise, yes, in time for the hearing. So that's, that's really very different and very appreciated, so I appreciate it. Is, is there any, are you aware of any grant funding that, that the VA should be applying for? Or should be able to avail itself of, um, including federal funds that you're currently using?
I believe that we, uh, provided them with a ten percent match for cemetery expansion, uh, a grant that the former, uh, OVA, uh, director said was available. Uh, my understanding is that, um, our cemetery went from a priority one down to priority three, for whatever reason. So there may be, um, that matching money that we set aside. We may have to, you know, revisit that, uh, simply because if there isn't a federal grant for us to use a match for. But nothing else, ma'am.
What would that amount be?
Uh, I think it was like a million dollars, 'cause I think the expansion was about, uh, ten or eleven million.
I think, uh, we're talking about that eight million dollar, and then, um, Mr. Sinagastin, at a recent event, announced that actually he may be securing thirteen million in October. So we'll see. Yeah, hopefully that million's still available. So that million is still available?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. All right. Does this, um, can you just tell all of us in the public, especially, uh, so this income that we're looking at, the revenues, they are more than we predicted during our budget sessions by, by a significant amount. Ninety-five million has, is that right, have come in? We've, we've spent some of that, that has come in, that's extra. Now we still have forty-six million unobligated. How does this compare to pre-COVID? Does this exceed revenue pre-COVID? Is this, um, when you said construction and retail, is that activity similar at this time?
It's a little bit different because pre-COVID, we had a very robust tourism, um, you know, sector. We had one point six million visitors. We had a strong third leg of this stool. Absent that strong third leg, I mean, the other two legs have been performing magnificently. So you have all the federal, um, government, uh, construction. Before that, you had the federal aid that went into the economy that resulted in, uh, uh, higher withholding taxes. But the good news is that, uh, after the PUA money was exhausted, we're still seeing a significant increase and sustained increase in withholding taxes. So, you know, our people are working and our, our, the taxes are being remitted. And then you see, uh, income taxes, and again, this is, um, after April, right? The tax filing deadline. So you're seeing that we, uh, received twenty-one million dollars more than what we anticipated, uh, year-to-date, uh, from that, um, general fund source. So, uh, I, I believe, as Mr. Guerrero stated, that, uh, we are on a very, very, um, uh, good, uh, economic path. And I do credit the legislature with passing conservative spending bills, uh, to begin with. And then doing what you're doing to the extent that you're doing it, is, is been working out pretty good.
So are these amounts, for example, um, the income taxes, more or less than pre-COVID?
Uh, I don't remember if it's more or less than, uh, COVID, but overall, when like we do the budget, right? So you, you're including a significant amount of money, uh, from the tourist attraction fund, uh, a significant amount of money that, um, uh, in BPT sales, right? Uh, retail sales that isn't there anymore. But we've seemed to have plugged the gap and more.
By, through these revenues?
Yes, ma'am.
Income taxes and BPT, pretty much. And do you think, uh, the tapering off of federal aid? For example, the deadline for use of ARP will, will, will we see a reduction in these taxes sources after that?
I don't believe so, ma'am, because, uh, we're not using very much ARP, uh, for like personnel, for example. And then you've got the village of Donkey that opened up, and they're employing like over five hundred people. So, uh, there's just a lot of things that have happened, uh, even down the street with, uh, with that opening of Jollibee. I mean, again, and then Manila, we're getting a McDonald's. So we're not, we're seeing an increase in service businesses and, uh, an increase in employment opportunities. So I think we're actually doing very, very well, ma'am.
All right, thank you. Mr. Sinagastin, do, are you aware of additional, uh, federal? Or it says that the VA can add Guam under rural grant eligibility and that would make available money for vehicles and support along the lines of this bill? That was one of the tests. That was one of the testimonies submitted.
So what's their name? The delegate had brought that up, their office had brought that up to us. I also know that Mr. Roy Gumbawa is looking into assisting us in how we could approach that particular program and apply. But yes, I've been somewhat made aware of it.
All right. And in your discussions with the VA, did you ask them to reallocate resources to healthcare support on Guam?
No, I did not. I can probably gauge that the governor had engaged those conversations with them.
All right. Thank you. Sidozmasi to the panel and Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, we have now completed, fully completed, the first round, okay? Because we had to cover Mr. Sinagastin and then the finance. And also I had a request from Senator Barnett to yield his time to the speaker. No, on the second round, ma'am, on the second round. So with that, we'll begin the second round with Senator Tidaway. Remember, we're on the second round. Now you can ask everybody questions, the second round.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick. I want to ensure that this funding does get to your office, Director Sinagastin. I think it's very vital that the comments that were made, that it's about time. And for us to think that, oh, we can go down the line and get some money in another grant, or we can try and get funding from another area, it takes time. This bill, this bill, and with my amendment that I'm going to incorporate into this legislation is going to require and shall be deposited into the Veterans Office upon enactment of this legislation. So you're going to get the money. The money's there. I don't want to have to wait, you know, for you to get the money with this list of other bills that have been submitted to us and the comment made, we might not be able to get this funding to you. So my amendment will require that it gets to you. I mean, the public law that was spoken about, 3684, I mean, that was using EITC money, which never came to fruition. We couldn't use any EITC funding. And then again, that bill talked about everything under the sky and the kitchen sink. Here, we're just concentrating on what is really needed for these veterans. Healthcare, healthcare. An aging group of veterans are growing by the minute, and they need this assistance. We have the opportunity to do this right now. So other than that, I really don't have any more questions. I do have two amendments that I will be proffing, one for Senator Barnett, and then, of course, one that gets the money to you right away. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Loud and clear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Senator Tidaway. I'd ask Senator Lohan, do you have anything? This is the second round. Ask anyone on the panel.
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much, gentlemen, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Guerrero, and of course, Mr. Sinag-- Director Sinagastin. Director Sinagastin, let me ask you this question. We're talking about enrolling or signing up veterans and the challenge of veterans signing up. I know on, you know, on every 10 years, the census comes out. I know there's a question, there's questioning in there regarding military service and all that. Is that information, I mean, I know that's a federal document, basically. Is that information shared with the local authorities in some regard to be able to extract maybe the veterans' component of that questionnaire? Then, you know, maybe then we can get, you know, more enrollees and be able to contact them, you know, have, again, a better, I guess, a base or catalog of the folks that are on Guam in regards to, at least for the veteran component of the census?
Yeah, so I appreciate that question, Senator. And to answer that question, not that I'm aware of, it doesn't account or it doesn't make its way to my office. Let me share with you what I know the numbers are, because there's three numbers that are out there floating.
Okay.
The one number, which is the larger number, the 24,000, are the DD-214 and records of veterans that we have seen and records of veterans, DD-214s, that we maintain down at the ASAN office.
Okay.
The 5,000 that the VA is claiming are the numbers that are being seen up at the community-based outreach clinic and in Hawaii. And those numbers should somewhat reflect our numbers as well. But not sure much, sure the percentage of those that are seeing the federal VA for health services, how many of them are registered in our office. Then the middle number, the 11,000 that has been-- In the dark number, that 11,000 is a number that the VA maintains with regards to when a service member is discharged and sent back to their home of record.
Sure. Okay.
So that's where the disparity of those numbers, and it's very inaccurate.
Sure. Yeah, I'm just wondering if we can maybe write to the Census and say, is there any way we can extract some of that, the Census number, and to share with the veterans for, you know, for the purposes of enrolling veterans and to give us, again, the arguments to get more veteran care out here in Guam? Because it's often said, well, you know, the reason why you're not getting all these veteran care out here is because you don't have the sufficient numbers to be able to sustain it. And so I'm just wondering if we'd be able to write to the Census Bureau, to be able to share some of those numbers, and whether or not, on every 10 years, whether or not those numbers have grown? And to see whether, again, whether or not, you know, they have maybe relocated to other places or passed and all that? And I'm just wondering if we'd be able to do something like that and have a base in which we can try to appeal and maybe contact some of these folks? Because they have their contact numbers. I know it's probably something that's not shared, but if, for reasons of trying to get, you know, veteran care, veteran help, and for our cause, to get more veteran opportunities here in Guam, if we can be able to do something like that?
Yes, sure. So you know, Dr. Santos up at the vet clinic up there in Mytik has reached out to me, I think, one or two weeks now. And supposedly, he's communicating with an individual back in DC that does the veterans count and apparently has a program that they're interested in wanting to work with us to see how we could integrate that program, that system into our office.
Yeah.
You know, my fault, because we haven't met with the gentleman, but definitely, I requested one of the secretaries to, actually, Lilian Kasaka, to communicate with Dr. Santos so that we can sit down and talk about the program. But very well brought up when we talk about the software. And that's the software we're looking for, that we could go in and determine whether that individual is still alive or has moved to California or where at. Based on the DD-214s that we have, if the software is capable of extracting the information that this is the individual's name, last four, the individual's still alive or has moved to California, then we can sort out our number, vice versa. You know, those individuals that were living in California now moved to Guam.
Sure.
Right? So it's somewhat a big challenge, but it's something we need to forge forward and see how far we could go.
Sure. Because it's, you know, the questionnaire in regards to the Census regards to veterans is pretty detailed, you know, because there's veteran status, period of military service, civilian veterans, and it says Gulf War, Vietnam era, Korean War, World War II, Gulf War, between Gulf War and Vietnam era, World War II only, and then service-connected disability, you know, and things like that. So it's pretty detailed.
Yes.
And so if we, again, or if the Veterans Office can tap into, you know, some of the, I guess, the information provided here, it may be able, you know, your office may be able to, you know, get more enrollees. I mean, I don't know at this point what they can release, but maybe more, a better grasp on the, I guess, a truer view or number on what we have, at least on every 10 years.
Yeah. And, you know, I mean, the census is a good thing, but like you said, Senator, every 10 years, right? You know, if we could go out door-to-door and put our, you know, vote for me, I think if I get the resources, we could do that. We could start up and daddado and work our way from north to south. So when they see people out there that are there willing to help them instead of folks that, I just want to get numbers, or probably I'm here because I want something from you, we want to go out there to say, we're here because we have something for them.
Sure.
Yeah. So the multiplication of adding more employees to our infrastructure, I think, will give us a upper hand that we don't need to wait for every 10 years.
What do you, in your view, what is the biggest obstacle? What is the biggest hesitation in veterans enrolling or signing up?
Yeah, thank you for that. Like I mentioned earlier, we're not immune from what the other jurisdictions are experiencing. I was up at 5 o'clock this morning watching the Memorial Day activity in Washington, DC. Marine gunner, female, Marine gunner female on a helicopter that crashed in the war zone. And apparently, she's an amputee now. The 50 caliber went through her mouth. And she was asked this morning, she was asked by the media, what is the challenges that she experiences, why the veterans are not coming out? And the same thing we see here. We're not letting them know we're here, and they don't think they need the services, and we're not letting them know that the services are here. Yeah. So more manpower. I'm willing to walk. I'm still healthy. I could walk. But if we could go, if I could go door-to-door asking people for a vote, I could go door-to-door and say, you have any veterans? Because we're here to help. Set up the computer in a van and, what you got? Go get DD-214 in there, and this is what we're going to do for you, and then move on to the next house. Or just park down the corner of the alley and say, coming out. More resources. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr. Snag-- Mr. Snag, thank you very much.
Thanks, sir.
And thank you for the work that you do. And to all the veterans, again, and blessed, again, Memorial Day, past post-Memorial Day to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator--
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. Thank you, Senator Lohan. Senator Shelton, you have the floor.
Thank you. Just wondering if there's an update regarding the Veterans Bill of Rights public law?
Yes, Senator. My staff told me that the primary source of funding was EITC reimbursement. We don't recognize reimbursements from EITC. And the other one was ARP. And the third one was FY21 general fund unappropriated revenue. And while we did have a surplus in FY21, there was continuing appropriations that negated that surplus. So--
It never got to them?
It never got to them.
Thank you. Is that all, Senator Shelton? Okay. Senator Paris, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, so really, you know, this is a good bill, and I just want to make sure that it covers a lot of ground. So that was what I was starting to ask about in regards to, do you see the language in this bill sufficient to also cover telehealth? And there's something called, you know, online access to MyVet?
Yeah. Thank you for that. Thank you for that question, Senator. I will need to follow up with the community-based outreach clinic, because a couple of months ago, they were supposed to install down into my office telehealth system capable. And they were excited when they came in. I showed them where the setup was supposed to be and where they could run the cable lines. So give me an opportunity to find out from them, because it appears that they're taking the initiative to be able to provide us that capability so that we could try to reserve some of our resources and give the federal the responsibility and the initiative that they had from the get-go to go ahead and install that capability at my office.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you feel the bill is going to help with that process for the telehealth and also access online to my--
Yes, ma'am. I think there's enough for us to be able to implement that capability.
Okay. I just, yeah, there's anything else you can think of in regards to expanding this? But I also, I think, too, like, the IT system, you know, if you need additional IT systems, but I think there's a lot already online. But I think what's really important is the case management, like, making sure that, you know, like what you said earlier, what happened was the veteran went to Hawaii, but they didn't have the services there. They had it in a different state. And so if we can, you know, prevent that from happening, whether it be through a case management system or otherwise, right? So, you know, I hope this language is sufficient to be able to do that for you.
Thank you, ma'am. If not, I think our SOP will define it.
Okay, great. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Very welcome, Senator Paris. Senator Blas, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Sinagastin, once again, thank you very much for being here. And just to clarify, because a lot of times, you know, people talk about the disparity of what we have is 24,000, and nobody's disputing that. I think that we do have much more than that, I can give frustration, versus the VA's, basically, the 5,000 and why the disparity. Could it be because, and like you said, unfortunately, veterans' services are two different, one Veteran Benefit and Veteran Health? Am I correct?
There's actually three. We include the National Cemetery.
Yeah, and the National Cemetery, okay? So, but primarily, the two, the Veterans Benefit and the Veterans Health. Your 24,000 can be ascertained that while 24,000 veterans may be looking at Veterans Benefit and National Cemetery, not all of them subscribe to Veterans Health.
That's correct.
So what we want, and I guess this is where we need to clarify for those veterans listening and watching this, is that just because you've got Veterans Benefit doesn't mean that you've got Veterans Health.
That's correct.
And please, there's where we need to pick up those numbers.
That's correct.
Okay? So, you know, because I've had discussions with a number of veterans who--
Sure.
I am a veteran, you know, I served, but do you, okay? But that's the number we need, those that are being able to enroll in the Veterans Health. That will help us to provide increased numbers from the 5,000 up to, you know--
That's correct.
Right?
That's correct.
So I just wanted to clear that. So with that, Mr. Chair, other than if there's any changes in the initial question that I asked as to whether or not there's anything that we should anticipate, if there's no change to that answer, then I thank you very much. That's all the questions I have.
And I'll take note of that question you asked, because we still have other bills that it's not going to move as fast as they think it's going to--
Thank you.
Senator Parkinson, do you have anything you want, any question? Madam Speaker, you have an additional time, okay? So just let you know that.
I don't have that many questions, just a few. So, Mr. Sinagastin, Director is-- So we talked about the bill doesn't really dictate what you're going to hire, right? It gives you-- It just says you're going to make a program available, and you have suggested you're going to hire these three people to assist in transportation and with the veterans in their prescriptions, coordinating appointments, creating their documentation files and other services. Do you-- In the Veterans Hospital, they have-- Do you, in the veterans' hospital, they have, is it social workers that also are designated to assist in that type of thing for those who are hospitalized?
Yes.
And is there any other program that the VA does that's supposed to take care of people, for example, caretakers? I know there's a program for caretakers and be checking on people who need medical care or have disabilities and need additional care in their homes. Does any of those work at your office? I mean, does your office already have any of those, social workers or a program for caretakers, or that's all run through the federal VA?
None from our office, madam. It's all from the federal.
Okay. And is it your understanding that when someone's discharged from the hospital, what are they entitled to as far as follow-up and care?
Yeah, so actually, they'll be given an appointment to let them know that they need to come back for a follow-up, depending on the severity of the illness or injury.
But is there, like, is a social worker who they worked with in the hospital also available to them once they've been discharged?
It depends on what the conditions are, if it's injuries, or is it something that has to do mentally that requires a social worker, or something that's severe that a social worker is required to engage.
Mr. Carlson, with this amount of excess revenues coming in, do you, we had taken out from the budget this year any appropriation to fund a new real property tax assessment? But according to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, they're going forward with one. It will be, the assessment will be funded by, I can't remember how much, from ARP funds, that's what they said. Presumably to bring in more revenue so that we can, it's not been formally said, but maybe informally by Mr. Byrne when he was here, so that, to increase our borrowing But there is no pending borrowing capacity bill. Do you believe we still need to increase the property taxes with this amount of excess revenues coming in in the general fund?
Thank you for that question, Speaker. It's not to increase the borrowing capacity. It's because it hasn't been done, and by law, it's supposed to be done every five years. So it's just a barometer of the economy. I mean, it's not meant to put people at risk of losing their property because, you know, the value of the property went up. I mean, I think there's enough safeguards currently in legislation and in statute that kind of protect people that are land-rich and maybe not so bank-rich. But I just saw something in, on the news for the mainland where, you know, the housing prices are going up. Housing prices are going up here, too. I think that for people who own property, they'd like to see what their value is, not necessarily from a asset standpoint, but from a valuation of what the land and the improvements are worth from a government's perspective. It kind of is, you know, what we tax them on it is not the same as what it is that it's valued at, because you've taken measures to offset that. So I don't really believe that it's there to increase the borrowing capability. Collectively, we retired the deficit without borrowing. We're paying income tax refunds on a timely basis. I don't think we need to borrow for operational costs. And we still want to, as far as the hospital's concerned, we still want the federal government to step in and provide funding for the hospital, because there are going to be users as well. So it's not for one specific reason. It's time that it gets done, and the ARP rules do allow for this expenditure. So it's an eligible expense.
All right. Do you remember the amount?
I think they're talking about $2 million.
All right. Yeah, and so we're looking now at an obligated $46 million general fund revenue. All right. I appreciate your thoughts on that. I think they might not be exactly consistent with Mr. Byrne when he was here the last time, however, I do appreciate your thoughts on that. Mr. Sinagstein, do you still expect, maybe you could just brief the body on your expectation in regards to that $8 million funding that you had been asked about when you were in here the last time, and the updates that you have received?
Very good. Thank you, Speaker. So a good friend of mine, while I was waiting out in the lobby, told me, "Be careful how you pass that information, because it's voting season, and the new president might just chop it away from you." But let me make clear how this went about. Was, it was supposedly $8.2 million that was considered to be awarded to the Guam Veterans Cemetery for the expansion of the cemetery. My travel to Louisiana, Kentucky, just back in April, I was able to request consideration to increase that funding for this reason. I need more funds to expand the cemetery so that it would not be disturbed twice, so that the expansion will take us as far as 40 to 50 years and don't have to come back 20 years from now and do another expansion. One. Two, 20 years from now would be more expensive if I'm still alive. So now was a smart time to make it happen. Three, their interpretation was based on our culture. They were used to burying on ground, not in crypts. So when you dig the ground, you're only able to bury two people at the most. If you build at crypts going upward, you're able to bury four to five. You multiply the capacity of the cemetery with less room. In saying that, just to let you all know that, once this expansion is done, the space of the 16-acre land mass is done. There's nowhere else to be able to bury, but it's going to take us into 40 to 50 years of life. And that's the rationale behind that.
Do you expect a matching requirement by the government of Guam?
I wasn't quite expecting the matching, because I'm not good at that. I'm good at going and presenting my case, begging. I'm hoping that, you know, my counterparts here will look, which they are, will look at my back and make sure that if there's any piece that I'm missing with regards to matching or funding, that they'll be able to come out and let me know. But as far as I'm aware, when I was reading the contents of the grant, was it's a grant that the VA was required to provide, and there was nowhere matching that I was aware of. Now, I might be wrong, because when I read, I only read the parts that are important to me.
All right. Who is, who do you expect to write up this grant application?
So it'll be, well, actually, it started with my predecessor, and they did a great job at it. But for me, I will utilize a state clearinghouse for that purpose, because I don't have the expertise to do that.
And you still expect to receive this by October?
That's correct, because the grant application already has been submitted now, and has been accepted. Now, the thing is, it's just a waiting time, because we went from priority three, now we'll be moving to priority one comes October, and that, they assured me. But again, you know, a good friend of mine called Tom Devlin told me, "Be cautious, because it's, the change of president might change that." But again, I think the election is November. They give it to me in October, and we'll put it in the account, in the bank.
Have the mayors been submitting to you additional names for the registry, or making referrals to you of additional? Remember, we passed a law when you were the director before, urging the mayors, when they do their mandated village surveys, to, when they encounter veterans in that survey, to refer them to your office so that you can include them in the registry? Has that been happening?
No, ma'am. It's not been happening, but I'll tell you, I met up with the mayors about a month ago, and I conveyed my interest in wanting to partner for them, with them, for that sole purpose. And I conveyed that if anybody knows their veterans, it should be them. So, again, it's one of those, we have to reach out and work with them.
All right. And then, the Department of Revenue and Taxation, are they submitting to you those who identify themselves as veterans for applications at the Department of Revenue and Taxation?
Yes, ma'am. But in many cases, some of the veterans will not render that information, that document, again, because they don't feel that it's the right agency. So they end up coming down to our office, and we end up retrieving the DD21 form, provide them the document they need to get services up at Revenue and Tax.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Oh, it's a reverse.
It's reversing, but it's okay. But the more resources, I think, will be more efficient.
All right. Okay. Then this bill, what it's anticipating, the services it is anticipating, particular to health care, is different than what the veterans' service representatives are going to be doing, because you have also told us that you're going to be hiring those pursuant to a grant.
Yes. We hope we could find somebody that's capable of doing that for us. But with regards to this particular bill, we basically, we pretty much want a service representative due to the HIPAA information. So information, anytime you have Social Security, individual names, and individual illnesses and whatnot, those are very much protected. So it'll be just no, you know, it has to be individuals that have that experience and that class of clearance to be able to provide that help. And I think the service representative, if we have them doing that, it'd be a double-edged sword. You'll be providing that service, but at the same time, doing the benefit part of the needs of the service member.
But wouldn't that reduce, then, the number of people available to help them with their claims? Remember, you were trying to increase the class?
No, because we're multiplying. We're going from the five we have now to 13 with the bill.
With this bill?
With the other bill.
Okay, five to 13 with the other bill, and then up to three, this bill. You're saying there are going to be VSRs as well?
That's correct. Yes, that's what we're looking at, based on the information that needs to, and the service that needs to be provided to the individuals, to the veterans.
All right. Okay. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you again to the panel.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My colleagues, that completes the second round. At this time, I'm going to dismiss the panel, and we'll move to the third round of amendments. And we only have two amendments. So folks, we'll just take a quick, two-minute recess, and then we'll proceed with the amendments, and then we can close and end this bill today. All right? And we do have, oh, we have no, we'll be in recess at this time. And we do have, oh, we have no, we'll, we'll, we'll be in recess at this time. The Committee of the Whole is back, is called, is back, back from recess. We only have two amendments. My colleagues, we'll begin with.
CB?
CB. Senator Barnett's vote is going to be read by Senator Ted O'Toole.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and colleagues. This amendment is proffered and sponsored by Senator Chris Barnett. And what it does is, it includes an area on line six, page two. It says, "However, nothing herein is to be construed or interpreted as to limit the office of implementing the services and provisions of this section prior to the establishment of positions and the creation of adjudication of administrative rules and regulations." The reason why he's proffering this, as mentioned earlier, it, it sounded like Mr. Son Augustine, is soon as he gets his health providers or assistants, that he's not going to turn anyone away. It's going to help them. And that's exactly what everybody has been saying from day one, this bill that's come out, that it's about time. So if we were to wait for the adjudication of rules and regulations, it's going to take at least four or five months before it can be implemented. The money is there right now. The 364 is within our grasp right now. So he can find these individuals and, and employ them now to get it started. Now, as far as like, if anybody should walk in and need some assistance with regards to how to fill out an application, I'm pretty sure it's going to be as easy as that. But you know, also, he also needs to prepare for the, the van. And what if they get this van right away? He, as you heard earlier, Director Son Augustine mentioned that he's been online, he looked at the vans that are needed. What if he gets a van by next month and he needs to help somebody get to a doctor's appointment? You don't need rules and regulations for that. So let's, you know, it's, it's, you're the veterans. This is a time where we need to put our foot to the pedal and move. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Would any of the colleagues like to speak on that? And if not, are there any objections to this amendment? There being none, amendment passes. Senator Tidaway, your next amendment, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, the next amendment is on line 15, page two. And this is, if you see the double-lined area on section 67113. "The appropriations from this act shall be transferred to the Guam Office of Veterans Affairs no later than the enactment, enactment of this act. The funds allocated and authorized in this section are not subject to EMAKAHAGAN GUAHAN Transfer Authority." Mr. Chair, the money is there. It was mentioned earlier about a, a previous bill, though the, you know, to assist with the veterans, that there was no money that was provided. Well, some of that reason is because it used EITC reimbursement, which cannot be used. But we should not have any excuses moving forward. The money is there right now. I mean, what stops the, the governor from appropriating funds for something else and losing out on this funding? We've already watched us lose out, the veterans lost out on the last time in the '36. So let's not lose that opportunity. The money is there. I asked Lester Carlson, do we have the funds for it? He said, yes, depending on which bill passes first. Well, I'd say you one thing, this bill is first. It's coming up and there's money in the account. So there's no excuse, no excuse whatsoever. And try telling a vet that. So, Mr. Chair, it's, it's a very simple amendment that makes sure that these veterans, the Veterans Office, receive this money to get started. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Tidaway. Does anyone like to speak to the amendment? If not, are there any objections to the amendment? There being none, amendment passes. My colleagues, there's no other amendments? Senator Tidaway, the author of the, of the bill, do you have a closing?
A closing.
And motion?
Yes, and, and a closing, just a short closing, Mr. Chair. I want to thank all those who participated in the public hearing, my colleagues included. There was quite a bit of senators that was there. So all those who came to testify, testify in favor and those who had written testimony in favor of this legislation. Not one person came that was against this bill, not one. It's a perfect fit, something that should have been done a long time ago. The year of the vet, this is the year of the vet. Let's put our money where our mouth is and truly help these veterans who served our country so that we can exercise our freedom. Lastly, I had an opportunity, Mr. Chair, to speak with the Lieutenant Governor during a function. And we do realize that that office space down in Assin is not conducive. It's, it's a home, it's a house. It's not a veterans' office. It really, we really need a location. And the Lieutenant Governor has promised me that he's doing everything he can to use Hessler, the old legislature's office. Just needs to find a place to put the, put public health. Well, hopefully with this bill, Mr. Chair, hopefully with this bill, the foot is going to press the gas. It's going to get done because the veterans need this. They need our help. So I ask my colleagues, help your veterans, help your Guam veterans and ask for your support. That being, that being said, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I move that Bill 268-37, as amended and further amended in the Committee of the Whole, be placed into the third reading file as recommended by the Committee of the Whole.
Colleagues, are there any objections to that motion, Madam Speaker?
Yeah, I just believe the motion should be too, that we, that's our recommendation as the Committee of the Whole.
Right, that's correct. Are there any objections?
As a recommendation, yes.
There being none. At this time, we will recess until tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. We will proceed, ma'am, Senator Amanda. 2:00 p.m.? My, my colleagues, we will recess until tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. We will begin with the GPA, Bill, Bill 277, followed by the other veterans' bill. That being said, see you tomorrow morning at nine o'clock. Thank you.